The Rotary Club of Columbus is a membership organization with a passion for service. Founded in 1915, we're one of Rotary's largest and oldest clubs worldwide. My name is Tyler Townsen, and I have the privilege of serving as the 2019-2020 club president. We all know the challenges the coronavirus pandemic is posing. Our club has faced tough times, including two world wars, but this is the first time we've had to suspend our in-person meetings. So instead of meeting here at the Trade Center, we're going to meet every week online until it's appropriate to return. So whether you're a member or a guest, thank you for joining us today. We're happy to join you. Welcome to the May 6th meeting of the Rotary Club of Columbus. Thank you for keeping Rotary on your calendar. We're reaching people through Facebook Live, later on demand, on YouTube, and even in an audio-only format in our dial-up conference line. For those of you that are watching live, we want to encourage you to chat with your friends and ask questions of the speaker, and we'll get to as many of those as we can. I'd like to take a moment to remember two fellow Rotarians who lost loved ones this week. Tim Graham's father passed away, as did Melanie Vineyard's younger sister Kristy. This, of course, would also be former Rotarian Art Chris's daughter. Tim and Melanie, I want you to know that we're thinking of you during this difficult time. As you know, our club has a proud tradition of honoring a special military guest at each of our meetings. And during the COVID-19 outbreak, we've had to, of course, do this remotely. And at this time, Pete Jones will introduce our special military guest.
President Tyler and fellow Rotarians, it's great to rekindle the tradition that we have of honoring our military service members, who we would hope would have attended lunch with us, but as you can see, he's in the proper PPE, but I would be too, but otherwise you wouldn't hear me. But this morning, and really this afternoon, I have Sergeant Nathan Shaver, who's a 89 Bravo, and that is an ammunition specialist. But he comes from a long line of military families, having entered the Army in 2014 out of Austin, Texas, where he was born. And he attended basic training at Fort Sill, Oklahoma, before he went to Fort Lee, Virginia, to earn his specialty. Now, what does an ammunition specialist do? Well, when you have all these courses going on, you have to run about 50 different missions a day to make sure all the ammo's at the ranges, so that these soldiers and drill sergeants can do the tasks that we ask them to do every day. And while you think Fort Benning is closed, you can be guaranteed the training is ongoing right now as we speak. They have a new command that's called At Six Minute Interval Dress Right Dress, but graduations are ongoing, and hopefully someday we'll be able to celebrate those graduations here on Inaway Field. But getting back to Sergeant Staver, he has attended air assault school, Master of Resilience Training Course, and has deployed as part of the 101st in 2017-2018 to Afghanistan. He is married to his wife Brooke, and they have three sons: four, two, and one. So guess what? He has built his own fire team at home with him as the team leader, but I'm sure Brooke is the squad leader and keeps you guys all in line. So on behalf of Rotary, I have a couple of things to give you. First of all is the challenge coin. That is one thing, so we'll have that next time we can have you for lunch. The next is a passport to the arts, so you're going to have to find a babysitter and take Brooke out to an evening at the River Center, Columbus Symphony Orchestra, Columbus State Theater Department, Springer, and of course, coming back here to the National Infantry Museum. So bring the boys, so we can take them to the virtual range, and they can go shooting. And the last one is, is when we have a chance, we'll get a great book by our own Colonel Puckett called Words for Warriors to add to your shelf. So on behalf of Rotary, thank you for your service. Thank your wife for her service, and stay safe, stay healthy. So any words you'd like to have to the crew?
I just appreciate this opportunity to be out here. I know we have COVID going on right now, but I do appreciate you guys taking the time and having me out here, so thank you.
President Tyler, fellow Rotarians, back to you.
Thank you, Pete. And Sergeant Shaver, I want to thank you for your service on behalf of our 300 members. We deeply appreciate you and your fellow soldiers at Fort Benning for keeping us safe. We look forward to having you visit us in person in one of our meetings when those conditions allow for that. Our club is proud and fortunate to have participated in the Georgia Rotary Student Program, also known as GRSP, for 66 of the last 68 years, and we have over 100 members that contribute at least $100 per year. We have, Ian Bond will now recognize two of our members as Will Watt Fellows.
Thank you, President Tyler and fellow Rotarians. I'm Ian Bond, and I currently serve as one of the district directors for 6900 for the Georgia Rotary Student Program, and I am the district chair nominee. It is my great pleasure today to recognize two of our own members who have contributed $1,000 to the GRSP endowment, and that's Frank Starr and Melissa Thomas. The endowment now pays for about one-third of the total cost of supporting each student that participates in the program. So we really appreciate the support of Frank and Melissa and all the members of the Rotary Club of Columbus, Georgia that generously supports GRSP.
Thank you, Ian, and thank you both to Frank and Melissa for your generous support of the GRSP program. We'll now hear from Tom Titus and Beth Schwartz, two of our fellow Rotarians, about a project that our club supports, the End Human Trafficking Now program.
Hello, my name is Tom Titus. I've been a member of the Columbus Rotary for 16 years, and I'm also co-chairman of the End Human Trafficking Now Coalition, established in 2016 by the Rotary Club of Columbus. Coalition is made up of Rotary Club members from our club and others in the area, as well as over 15 community organizations that deal with human trafficking in our community. The organizations are religious, faith community, shelters, schools, colleges, and other educational services, law enforcement and the criminal justice system, direct service providers, health services, and the medical community. Our mission through the coalition is to end the trafficking of women, children, and men by providing a forum for coordinating of services, raising awareness, and educating the community to prevent the entry of potential victims into the trafficking flow and offer a coordinated opportunity for shelter and the restoration of the victims. The Rotary Clubs of this community are uniquely positioned, I believe, to support this activity for our community. I'd like now to introduce the co-chairman of the End Human Trafficking Now Coalition, Rabbi Beth Schwartz.
My name is Beth Schwartz. I am the rabbi at Temple Israel here in Columbus. Our synagogue is located in Midtown, and I've been a member of Rotary for, I think, close to seven years, almost as long as I have been in Columbus. I follow in a wonderful tradition of the rabbis at Temple Israel, serving as members of Rotary and being able to participate in activities to better our community. And one of those activities for, oh, almost five years now, has been the goal of ending human trafficking in our community. We came together as a Rotary initiative to raise awareness of the problem of human trafficking, to have a committee, a standing committee within Rotary, and through that committee to sponsor and facilitate a community-wide coalition against human trafficking. And that coalition coordinates among its members so that everyone knows what activities are being planned and carried out, what information we have gathered and can make available to each other to support our work across quite a number of communities, and also to educate, to educate our community about this problem. Columbus happens to be a major stop on the so-called pipeline of victims of human trafficking between Point South and Atlanta. So we know that it's a big problem. We know that it is a hidden problem. And we also know that for as long as there are people who are willing to pay for sex, there will be sex trafficking. And so the goal of reducing the demand is a long-term goal, but a very important goal. So we coordinate our efforts, and we educate, we bring together resources, and build strength in our community so that we can grow, we can prosper, and be a safe and healthy community for all of our residents, all of our children, and build a better future for Columbus.
Beth and Tom, thank you for your important work in leading this program that is so crucial to our community. Before we introduce our program, I have a couple of quick announcements. I first want to welcome and thank our Assistant District Governor Tracy Van Norman for joining us today, and Tracy, for your support that you've provided to our club throughout the year. Our next online happy hour mix will be tomorrow evening, 6 to 8 o'clock. These have been a lot of fun. They're very casual. It's a drop-in. We use the Zoom meeting technology. You'll get a link in an email, so drop in anytime between those hours. We're also bringing back our breakfast mixes. So the breakfast mixes, you may remember, one of our own Rotarians leads the meeting and talks about themselves, either personally or private lives, and it's a great opportunity to get to know our members. That will be Friday morning from 8 to 9 a.m., and you'll also receive a link to join that, and I hope that you will. Rotary Poker continues every Monday evening, 8:30. It's a lot of fun. This is a free-to-play, no-money-changes-hand. You get free coins to be able to play with. We use Zoom again so that we can talk and see each other on the screen. It's more social than anything. It's for beginners and experienced players. I hope that you'll join us. If you're interested, please let the office know, and we'll help you get set up to do that. So at this time, Walker Garrett will introduce our program.
Thank you, President Tyler. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest CEO of PAWS. I serve on the board there, and after reviewing her bio, we are so, so lucky to have Trisha Montgomery join us as the CEO. She's now serving as our CEO, and she's got a long history with us. She's the founder and former CEO for K9 Fit Club, Health, Fitness, and Wellness Science Based Programs, and Gyms for People and Dogs, with 80 locations across the U.S. and Canada. Prior to the K9 Fit Club, Montgomery served as Executive Director and Public Education Director for the Chicago Veterinary Medical Association. She's a graduate of the University of Alabama, so don't hold that against her, but she's got over 20 years of award-winning executive leadership in health and wellness, medical education, veterinary associations, pet industry, and pet health and nutrition. She's a pioneer and leader in the human and canine fitness, and she's built lasting relationships. And we actually have a celebrity here with us today, because she's been on The Today Show, Good Morning America, Fox and Friends, The Doctors, Oprah, NPR, and other media outlets. She's also an author. She wrote Better You, Better Dog, Better Life: 30 Days to Happiness with Your Best Friend. She has a passion for transformation, innovation, reaching audiences, and giving voices to causes, and connecting people, and building relationships, and changing lives. And couldn't be any more appropriate, I have my PAWS adopted dog in my lap, so I'm handing the program over to Trisha.
Thank you, Walker. Thank you for that amazing introduction. So nice to meet everybody virtually. I'll wait till the applause dies down for me. Oh, wait, there's no applause. It's just me in here. Nice to meet everyone. So excited to be here. Walker, again, thank you for that introduction. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the pet effect, besides talking about the great things that PAWS is doing here in the Columbus and Chattahoochee Valley, and so amazing. So this is about, a little bit about the pet effect. I don't know if you all have heard of it, but it's a tremendous thing. So Walker already did that great introduction. I moved here in December of last year, started work for PAWS from Chicago, December the 2nd, and have been here for about a little bit over four months now. And unfortunately, due to COVID, my furniture has not arrived, so I am without furniture, but I'm doing just fine. I visited here and really fell in love with it. And again, I'm very familiar with the South, having gone to University of Alabama, Roll Tide, but I fell in love with it, and the community has been incredibly just beautiful and welcome to me. And such a blessing to be here and do what I do and serve Paws Humane Society, and the great city of Columbus and the Chattahoochee Valley. Paws Humane Society, what can I not say about this amazing organization? So we opened up our doors in 2009. Currently, COVID has really taken our operations and moved them slightly, so we are doing curbside veterinary service as well as doing adoptions by application and appointment. So we are practicing social distancing. But to see what we've done in the course of this time is unbelievable. Our adoptions and numbers have been higher, our veterinary clinic numbers have been higher, and we're making sure that we really service people the way that we should, and incredible team here and board that supports us. We do service the Columbus Animal Care and Control, and we do pull money, or pull money, we pull animals from them, and we're making sure that they stay consistent with no kill or yes-save is what we're trying to change that language to. A little bit of a virtual tour here for Paws Humane Society. You've got your adoptions, we've got our veterinary clinic, we've got the foster programs, we also have a new, brand-new transportation program, and excited to talk more about that. And I've got a special guest arriving right now as I am getting, rolling into this presentation. So I'm going to roll right now into the pet effect, and I've got a little kitty with me right now. And so pets are more than just cute and cuddly. You know, research shows that they actually make us happier. They also make us healthier. They make us live longer, happier, and healthier lives. And there's something said, to be said, for holding on to a dog or cat, and it decreases our depression, increases our serotonin, and just makes us feel better, just makes us feel better. You can see from that little cartoon up there, my therapy is quite simple. I wag my tail, and I lick your face, and feel good about you. But also, if you look at things, it's the power of the pet effect. So there's about 65% of all U.S. households have pets. 69% of pet owners say their pets are important to their physical health, and 75% of pet owners say that their pets are important to their mental health. So think about us. During COVID, and when we are upset or when we need a hug, we sometimes will, we will turn to our pets, and they make us feel so much better. Along with that, according to the American Animal Hospital Association, more spouses will say hello to their pets before they will to their own spouses. So that's a, that's a great thing there. So my question for you guys is, what if you had a 24/7 health advocate? Somebody who could offer you unconditional love? A professional counselor, full of inspiration? Somebody who is ready to exercise, calm during times of stress? How about knowing when you're sad, happy, depressed? What about someone that you could fall in love with? Somebody who listens to you? Somebody who even helped you out with nutrition? What do you think? I wonder how much that would cost? How do you, how much do you all think that that would cost? Well, I have an answer for you. Just a bunch of kibble and a whole lot of love. That's how much it would cost. So let's talk a little bit about prescription dog. So prescription dog, so first of all, I know I can't see you raising your hands right now, but if you were to raise your hands, how many people of you have a dog? And if you're, if you can comment in the Facebook page, let me know how many people have a dog. Because the thing about our dogs, they're providing the warmth and the comfort to our lives, but they're also providing us heart health. That's right, heart health. So they help us out with heart attack survival. Pet ownership, especially having a dog, is associated with the risk of lower heart disease. Studies have shown that people that own dogs have, they have a calming effect on them, and the power of touch really seems to be important here. Along with it, there is research and evidence from the Human Animal Bond Research Initiative that it talks to us about lowering our triglycerides and lowering our cholesterol. So dogs are really helping us out for a heart attack survival. So let's talk about the benefits of owning a dog. Did you know that 36% of all Americans are dog owners? And 73% say that their dogs let them know ahead of a thunderstorm? And you know, I think that's pretty important in Columbus, because I've never seen so much rain. Along with that, their noses, they can smell things 1,000 times more than what we can smell. And do you know what else? Just in case any of you, including you, Walker, if you want to teach your dog words, they can learn up to 200 words. Isn't that crazy? 200 words that they can learn. So let's talk about prescription cat. I know there's cat lovers out there. I just have one in my lap. The benefits of owning a cat, and I love this slide right now. This really says it all, because pet ownership, and if you look at loneliness and stress, these pets do so much improvement and add so much value to our lives. Do you know that research demonstrates the positive exposure, whenever cats are exposed early on to children, it actually eliminates allergies, because it provides the immune and helps out with asthma later in life? A longtime study that talks about cats and desensitization, that teenagers who were around cats early on, that they had a lower risk of a cat allergy than their peers. So it's proven that just exposure to cats and dogs at an early age helps strengthen that immune system. They're good for us. They make us live longer. Along with that, there's a study, again, by Haveri or the Human Animal Bond Research Initiative, that says cat ownership is actually going to help you better adapt to stressful situations. I wander through these past couple weeks, if anybody has been in a stressful situation. I can't imagine that we haven't been, but it's very interesting when you look at pet ownership, how much they're providing to us. Let's talk about depression. We don't, you know, that's something that, not a taboo subject, but it's something that people get depressed. And when we're around our pets, they're providing us a sense of purpose. They're providing us a sense of confidence. They're also showing that they're providing a calming influence on us. Again, how I mentioned about the cats, handling that stress. And pet owners know the benefits of both mental, and it says, they're saying that it really goes both wells, both ways. Along with that, from a cognitive and a behavioral standpoint, an emotional standpoint, they're helping us out, guys, at every age. They're providing to our children, they're providing to us when we're teenagers. Think about children when they get stressed out from studying. Right now, more and more universities are allowing pets on campus, especially when that, when those times come for finals. I can't ima, I would imagine how much better I would have done at the University of Alabama if I would have had a pet around me during finals week. So think about that. They're really giving you that comfort and giving you the confidence. Along with that, children for reading programs, people with stuttering, children with stuttering problems, once they begin just to read to a dog, they're not being corrected. So their reading and their skills are improving so greatly. And that research goes on and on, from mindfulness, from encouraging activity. And we know that with depression, it is important to have exercise as well. Let's talk about pets in the workplace, and I have to say, if any of you in your, in your workplace would like us to bring a pet from Paws Humane Society, we are more than happy to do what we call a loan and leash program, and we will deliver a pet to you. You can keep it throughout the day. We will then pick it up at nighttime or before you're closed at business, because, listen, this is called SMURTH, and if you can all say that for me at your desk right now, it's called SMURTH. And what that means is, it's stress. They're relieving the stress of the work environment. That's why we're all so calm here at Paws Humane Society, and we do the work that we do for a positive, and that's P-A-W-S. Along with that, that M stands for morale. They actually build morale. It makes people really come together, leading into interaction. And if you think about that, being able to start a conversation about your, about the dog, and then it goes into the workplace. Along with that, health. Pets lower our blood pressure. It just helps us, again, through those stressful situations, it helps us live, our pets help us live longer, happier, healthier lives. That's all I can say about that. We're always here, healthy here at PAWS, and so that's a good thing. It also helps with emotions. Say that we've missed a deadline or a work assignment or something like that, it helps us out with emotions that we had that might be triggered because of that. It also provides more reliability. If I am now caring for my, for my animal, and I'm here, then it makes me more reliable at work. Along with that, it increases productivity. So with a pet at work, you can't be wrong. Again, just kind of wrapping up, pet health benefits to adding a pet to your life. Pets, they have a direct influence on our health. They're lowering our blood pressure, and they're increasing our levels of serotonin. And serotonin, what does that do for us? That makes us happy. They're increasing our exercising and improving our mobility. Think about pets within nursing homes, or think about pets for the elderly. They're actually helping them move better and giving them a sense of purpose. They're reducing our stress, our anxiety, and our depression. They're providing us interaction and care during exercise sessions for moods. They're providing us companionship, and they're preventing loneliness. Along with that, they're increasing our confidence and increasing our socialization. During the time of COVID, we had so many people here who fostered animals. Currently in Foster, we have 140 kittens in Foster right now. It is kitten season. And those people fostered because many of them were home alone. And so having that pet helped them with that isolation and decreased the anxiety and the depression that they might have had if not for a pet. Also, according to the American Animal Hospital Association and the American Heart Association, people with dogs exercise 34% more than those without a dog. So if you're looking to get exercise, if you're looking to lose a little bit of pounds and getting that summer body on, there's no better workout companion than your best friend. Along with that, pet owners over age 65 make 30% less, fewer visits to the doctor than those people without a pet. So simply put, having a pet is good for you, it's good for your health, and it's helping both ends of the leash. If you're thinking about getting it in addition to your family, there is no better place than Paws Humane Society. We have dogs, we have cats, we have kittens, we have puppies, we have ferrets, we have chinchillas. There's no elephants or tigers or anything like that, but we have a pet that is right for your family, and our adoption team will help you determine the pet that's right for you. So if you're thinking about getting a pet now, all you need to do is go online, fill out an application, find a pet that is right for you. One of our adoption counselors will contact you, they'll consult with you, and make sure that that pet is right for your home. And then in turn, they will contact you, schedule an appointment with you, and you'll come here and do a meet and greet on the outside. Again, our veterinary clinic is, is available as well right now, too. So let's talk about some of the fun things that are happening at Paws Humane Society in the coming months. So remember, I mentioned to raise your hands, or to put in that comment category of Facebook, are you, do you have a dog, or you have a cat, or maybe you have both? Well, what we're going to find out in June, we're going to find out if Columbus is a dog city or a cat city. Are, are cats meow? Get it? Meow. Or are dogs the woof? And fabulous. So we're going to be doing a texting campaign in June, and we want to make sure that you join us, so we can find out and determine if Columbus is a cat city or a dog city. And we're really excited about this. This is going to be a first for us. And we're going to be on the road to find, to make Columbus what we like to call a better cities for pets. What that means is, we're going to be working with the City of Columbus, Mayor Skip Henderson, and many others, to make sure that we're making Columbus pet-friendly, as pet-friendly as we can. And why are we doing that? Because pets, but they're increasing tourism, they're increasing finances, they're being, increases money into the city. So we want to make sure that we're constantly doing that. Along with that, we're also working with Mayor Henderson right now on what we like to call Dinner in the Doghouse. And so we're twisting his arm. And so if you have any pull with the mayor's office, he's semi-agreed to it, but we want to make sure that we push him over the edge. And so we're going to do a little roasting of the mayor in support of Paws Humane Society. It's called Dinner in the Doghouse, and that's going to happen in November. And lastly, I am so excited, I am through the roof to talk about this. It's going to be happening in cooperation and coordination with the Trade Center. But mark your calendars now. Let's have a drumroll. It is save the date. We're bringing back the, we're actually going to have our first year, but we're going to be having somewhere to go on New Year's Eve. It's called the Black Cats Ball. It's for New Year's Eve at the ironworks. It's going to be ringing in 2021 with us. We'll have live entertainment, a silent live auction, a plated dinner, and everything is benefiting Paws Humane Society. And I want to thank Haley Tilleri from the Trade Center for coordinating that, this with us. We're so pleased about this. Going to be black tie, give us a reason to dress up and really celebrate the end of COVID and just, you know, really seeing the light and rejoicing in the blessings that we have and, and the New Year's Eve. And we're so excited. And so again, mark your calendars now. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity. I cannot wait to meet you all in person. I cannot wait to be there with you all. I'm hoping to be a fellow Rotarian. And I know that, that Walker is going to be saying a few words about that, maybe in the coming weeks. But thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to, to seeing you all in person in the future.
Okay. Tricia, while you've been talking, we've had a, we've had a couple of, let me get my video going. And my, my dog is, my, my adoptee is, we had during the presentation, if you will leave it in comments, if you've got another one, from one Rotarian earlier, he, he asked, and you may not know this, is it true that train, that they are training dogs to detect COVID? Do you know anything about that?
Um, I know that, that is in the works right now. They, they are doing that right now. There is a trial study going on, I believe at Cornell University. So yes, that is happening right now.
Okay. That's the first question. I'm just, I'm falling to see, okay. And how can our Rotary Club supporter get involved with Paws?
Oh, my goodness gracious. Wow. So if you notice the little dog bone behind me, we just had an amazing Giving Tuesday yesterday. And we actually exceeded our, our goal here. You know, we're always looking for, we're always looking for donations, we're always looking for volunteers, we're looking for people to come and foster or work with us. There are so many ways to get on board with us. And, and all you simply need to do is go to our website, contact me, everybody's, well, I'll make sure that my information is shared. But so many beautiful things that, that, that do need the support of Paws Humane Society, you know, we're, we're privately funded. And so we rely on people, and we rely on, on the volunteers for that as well. That's a great way to get involved. And also, I do want to mention, this coming Saturday, we know that the people of Columbus are in need. And we have organized with the Atlanta Humane Society, as well as Greater Good, and we're having about 4,000, that's 4,000 pounds of dog food, both wet and dry, cat food, both wet and dry, critical supplies. We're going to be giving that to rescues throughout the Chattahoochee Valley. But along with that, if you know of anybody in Columbus that is in need of food, from noon until 2:00 PM, send them our way. We're giving away free food, dog beds, kitty litter, anything that they can think of. We got it here for them. And we want to make sure that your, 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 you know, your constituents know to let others know, this is open to the public. And again, we know the people are suffering right now, and we want to be able to help them in any way we can. So that free food.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia. Are there any other questions? Those were the only ones I've seen so far on our Facebook feed. If you've, if I see any others, I'll be happy to ask them. Tyler, I think that may, that may be all of our questions for today.
All right. Well, very good. Well, thank you, Walker. And Tricia, thank you for that program. Thank you for helping us to learn more about the benefits of pet ownership. We're really excited to have you in Columbus, and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you.
As is, as is our club tradition, we are going to donate a children's book to the Columbus Public Library that will be inscribed with your name.
Oh, thank you all so much. That's so much appreciated.
Well, thank you.
A round of applause to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, our members, for keeping Rotary on your calendar. Next week, Mayor Skip Henderson will be joining us, and he'll give an update on the virus, how it's impacting Columbus, and what we can expect in the weeks and months ahead. So I know we'll all want to hear that update. I also want you to put on your calendars for the following week, May 20. We're going to have a special Memorial Day program that we've been working on for quite some time. We're going to broadcast live from the National Infantry Museum with appropriate social distancing. We're going to hear from two Gold Star families as we honor those who've made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. So please join us at that time. I hope you all have a great, wonderful week. And until that time, we're adjourned. Thank you.